On Thursday, June 20th, 2019, and called a meeting to order. We'll start off with item 1.1, which is the Pledge of Allegiance by Jackie.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do have a full quorum today, so we'll move on to item 1.3, which is a conflict of interest. Is there anyone in the planning commission with a conflict of interest with any of the items today?
Yes, I have a conflict on the Maverick property.
Okay.
Maverick's a client, so.
Okay, then are you gonna just refrain from voting and being involved in?
What's that?
You're just gonna refrain from voting on that item? Okay. And we're looking for item 1.4. Oh, John?
Could I recommend when it gets to that point that you leave the dais and put on the record that he's left the dais?
Okay.
When we get to that item?
Yeah, we can do that. And that's item, just to be sure, 2.3? All right. And then I'll look for the planning commission to make a motion on approval of minutes for May 16th, 2019.
We'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for May 16th.
I'll second that.
Motion by Andrew and a second by Brody, and we'll start with the vote down on Adam.
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
And Jackson.
Yes.
All right. Now, I'm just gonna ask Bryn real quick. We have actually, just so I'm not confused, on the agenda, we have 1.4 and then goes down to 1.1 again on approval of minutes for May 16th. Is there, is it actually listed twice? I just wanna make sure there wasn't a reason why. I assume not, probably just a typo.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to the administrative items. We do have a couple of items on for public hearing, and so as we get to those, we'll, we'll do that. Item 2.1 is where we'll start, and it's request for a deviation from the single-family dwelling standards to allow a roof pitch difference, and we'll turn to the city staff.
Okay, so this is one that has come before you. It was around a month or so ago, and at the time, the applicant was asking for a possibility of two elevations. They had one that was more of a prairie style and one that was more of a modern style. When it came before you, the planning commission didn't really show much of an appetite for the prairie style. So the applicants decided to whittle it down, and now they're just asking for the one style that you did show interest in, which was the modern style, used the two and a half to 12 roof, or the, yeah, the two and a half to 12 roof pitches in the design. You also asked for a little bit more information, so you could make a little bit better educated decision and have some more technical information. So they provided new elevations that are a little bit better labeled. They also lacked stone on the side of the home at the time. This, this time, they do include stone on the side of the home, along with the option, or if you look at the site plan, they also show where they're going to include a fence too from the back of the home. They list a number of, which I will, the applicant is here, he will get to explain all this. But they have added some other information. They've got color renderings and stuff for you too. So they've just bolstered their case a little bit, limited their choice down to one, the modern style. And also, I do want to bring to your attention one of the slides, this one right here. The only thing you're meant to take away from that picture, really, is that is to clarify exactly what the garage door is that they are proposing, 'cause it looks different from the rendering right here. I just want you and they want you to be aware, and they will explain exactly what that garage door is comprised of. But that was a topic of conversation the first time they came before you. So with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant, and then you can ask any questions that you have for him or whatever.
Thank you so much, Craig. If the applicant would just state his name?
Jason Darger.
All right, thank you.
Greenhaven Homes.
And then if you wanna just maybe go through, based off what we talked about last time, some of the additional material and additional pictures and images that you have here.
Yeah, so you'd requested the labeling, which we put on there, the wider soffits, which was one of the compensating factors. The specific garage door, the renderings are a little bit limited in what they can draw, but that's why we provided the picture. That's a compensating item. We're proposing to do black windows. That's a 35% increase to us. So we're trying to be bold but neutral. So that's a compensating factor. The, a full glass modern door, front door. And then you had also asked the labeling, which the architect put on for the stone, which is another compensating factor, I believe, I believe it's 58%. 56%.
All right, is there any other items you wanna share?
No, that's it.
All right, then I'll turn to the planning commission, see if they have any questions while you're still up here.
I, I don't think, I don't have any. I think he met what we requested, so I'm good.
All right, then I'll let the applicant take a seat. You can have a seat for now.
Did you have the coloring rendering in here? I haven't seen that.
Yeah, we did it.
Yep.
You had asked for colors, which, oh, there it is, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
It looks good.
Thank you so much. And then at this time, I'll turn to the planning commission to make a motion unless there's further discussion they'd like to have.
I'd like to motion to approve 2.1.
A motion by Heather?
I'll second it.
Second by Adam, and we'll call for a vote, starting with Jackson.
Aye.
Andrew?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
And Adam?
Yes.
That passes, and we'll move on to item 2.2, which is on for a public hearing. And while we're here, I'll just read the public hearing policy. "The purpose of public hearings is to allow citizens to address items on the agenda. Citizens requesting to address the commission will be asked to complete a written comment form and present it to the deputy city recorder. In general, the chair will allow an individual two minutes to address the commission. A spokesperson recognized as representing a group in attendance may be allowed up to five minutes, and this policy applies to all public hearings." All right, we'll turn to the city staff at this time.
Okay, so this is item 2.2. It's a preliminary plat approval for a two-lot commercial subdivision. File number on this is S-2019052. This property is located at 12120 South Mountain View Corridor. It's roughly six acres in total. It's currently zoned still under the auto mall. As we discussed in the work meeting, there's a rezone application right now to rezon that to C2. The council heard that on their work meeting, and it will reappear before them for a vote on June 26th. Important to note here is that this is just for the plat itself, just for the subdivision approval. So this shows the preliminary plat here. It's gonna be about two lots there. The only reason they're really splitting it into two lots, and I'll let the applicant speak further to this, is for, I believe, financial reasons. And then important to note is that this will have to come back to you guys to achieve conditional use approval. So during that process, you will be able to speak to more specifics as far as elevations, as far as landscaping, as far as fencing, things like that. So this is just gonna be the plat itself, and we'll let the applicant speak more to the project.
All right, thank you. At this time, if the applicant's here, if you wanna come up and then... Oh, Harriman City, applicant, thank you, Gordon.
I'm the applicant. That's why I'm sitting in the audience, not getting any candy. Hard deal. Yeah, thanks. This is a piece of property the city has owned. We purchased 55 acres, and this was part of the auto mall zone. We've come back and talked to you about rezoning it. We now have it under contract with a, with a buyer, and so we can now start disclosing what we're planning to do with this property. So I'm gonna bring up some pictures just showing you what they're looking to do with the property.
Oh, is there one over here?
No, it's in my book.
Oh. You can't be?
You should have.
Oh, he does not need more candy.
All right, so what's happened is we've been working with Aaron Osman, and he's putting together what he's calling game point. And so we're gonna show you what this is gonna look like. You're not approving this, but generally, when you get a subdivision plat, you wanna have some idea what you're doing with the rezone. Because this was a lot of contractual stuff, we needed to wait till this. And you're gonna get a full-blown presentation with all the renderings that need to go through, forward. And so this is what has been showed to the council, and so you'll get a chance to see it, and now it's official. So they're looking at putting in a game center, an entertainment element. It's gonna, there's gonna be two buildings. The first is gonna be about a 40,000 square foot building. It's going to include the things you see there, laser tag, bowling, ropes course, restaurant, escape rooms, all kinds of cool stuff, and you can see the visuals. This was a different configuration of the lot, but it has changed with the road. And you'll see the subdivision. There's a small building up here. This road was straighter, so the subdivision separates this building and this. This will be kind of a restaurant food. This is the ropes course. I'll have two miniature golf courses with the outdoor ropes course. This is inside the building with the bowling, escape rooms, all the kinda cool stuff. This kinda shows you what they're looking at with the ropes, with the building, the miniature golf, kinda just some renderings inside. They have the different kind of features coming in, different sports things, escape rooms. And then the outdoor ropes course is kind of their big focal point that people can see. You have a harness and you do all kinds of stuff. Apparently, it's safe, so we can let kids use that. And I didn't wanna spend too much time looking at it, 'cause you gotta see the whole building. That is not what you're approving tonight. The subdivision just moves us forward with this, and you'll get a full presentation of, of the whole project. So from staff, we really think this is a good opportunity for the city. It combined, it's right between where we have the Anthem Commercial and the Auto Mall. One of the big things with retail is you need entertainment destination. And so we think this is a great opportunity to bring that into our community that will help facilitate and keep the area vibrant and going forward. So we have some other things we're looking at in the area as well, but this will be the first one. Any questions?
Yes, a question for lot one. How come it?
Could you bring up the power? So you're the first ones in the public to see that, so yay.
Awesome. Just curious, on lot one, did you need frontage on Main Street?
So this, this lot is fronting, I don't have my pointer.
Miller Crossing? Miller Crossing?
So the city is under construction now on, on Main Street. We're going to build that. For the developer, he's responsible of everything behind the curb, and that will include the sidewalk, the streetlights, the landscaping. So he, so both lots front Harriman Main Street. Miller Crossing is going to be built hopefully next, we're, we're working through the details, and then other developers building that road. So it may be a little bit longer before that's built. But these two lots will have the frontage off of Main Street. We anticipate Miller Crossing coming fairly quickly into, into play, so.
But Harriman City, Harriman Main Street is already dedicated?
We already, it's already dedicated. We own it, and it's under construction. And we have the funding for it. So technically, both lots are meeting the frontage on a, on our city street.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just a quick one. Technically, it's still part of, it's still auto mall zone until?
No, we had, we had to rezon this. This came to C2 because auto mall zone is very restrictive. You can only do, so, just talked about development agreements. This is gonna have a development agreement. It's gonna come to you. This is the only thing they can use this for. If they don't have this built in two years, the city gets the property back. There's a whole bunch of clauses in it that you'll see, you know, what, what's going to be there. So the city, since we own the property, are putting these in the contract and in the development agreement. So this is exactly what you get.
The council will take a vote on June 26th, whether to approve that rezon.
Okay, so technically, it's still auto mall?
Correct.
As of, as of today, it's still?
Right, so you guys recommended it, I think, in your meeting on the 16th, that that be approved, and then?
Most recommended it.
Yeah, right. And then they sought at their work meeting, and then it'll come before them for about on the 26th.
Okay.
And all of these things have to take place, the rezoning and the subdivision, for us to fulfill our portion of the contract to sell them the property. So that's kind of the deal we're doing.
But this is only the subdivision we're reviewing?
That's, you are not approving any uses. You're not approving any development agreement. You'll see all that. Today, you're just seeing a two-lot subdivision on six acres.
Thank you, Gordon. At this time, we'll open the public hearing to the community. Seeing that there's no one with any comments today, we will close the public hearing and turn to the planning commission for comments.
I, I don't see an issue with it. It's a subdivision, whether it was a, I mean, it still could even be a dealership at this point. It's just a subdivision, so.
It's just a subdivision.
Yep.
All right, then we'll...
Wish it was for a dealership, but that's me.
All right, then we'll turn to the planning commission for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion on item 2.2, to approve item 2.2 with five, the five recommendations by staff.
Second.
We have a motion by Adam and a second by Andrea. We'll start with the vote on this side with Jackson. Yes. Andrew?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
And Adam.
Yes.
All right, that will pass, and then we'll move on to item 2.3. But before we move on to that, we will ask Jackson to excuse himself for item 2.3, and then we'll invite him back in after. All right. Now, item 2.3, which is a request for a plat amendment to divide one lot into two lots for the Maverick Lot Retail Building, and we'll turn to city staff first.
Okay, this is a request by the applicant to subdivide the parcel just up Harriman Main Street from where we are, where the Maverick, the new Maverick currently sits. They have been under construction for quite a while on the retail, the three-unit retail building that's on that parcel currently. It was always in the plan for them to do this from the very beginning. This is already a subdivision. This is a one-lot subdivision currently that was done long ago, many, many years ago. They're just looking to divide it to have each building on separate parcels. And I'll, the applicant is here, so I'll let him answer any questions that you've got.
Thank you, Craig. If you don't mind just stating your name?
Kate Cunningham, manager, West Valley EPLLC.
Great, and if you wanna share any more insight into this?
Yeah, typically, when we, well, technically, when we brought this, it's always kind of had this amended plat with the subdivision line. We're just moving forward. We own the entire, the entire site. It just makes it easier for taxes, CAM charges, insurance policies, premiums for, for title insurance, so on and so forth. We did a lot of the foundations and, and underground, kind of at the same time as Maverick, but then we backed off because we wanted them to finish. And so now we finally finished the exterior on the building, and we're ready for the asphalt here in the next coming weeks with curbing and everything, so I hope you guys like it.
All right, thank you so much. Are there any questions?
There was a question, I guess, before. The, the sidewalk and stuff is still being installed on that section on the road?
Yeah, we were just waiting for all the scaffolding. They're gonna come in and do all the sidewalk here on the south side of the building.
Yeah.
It's a, it's been leveled and everything. It's ready to go.
All right, thank you. We'll ask you to take a seat. And this is on for a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing at this time. At this time, we will close the public hearing and turn to the planning commission for comment.
I just think we should put it as a requirement that the sidewalk be done. I know they have the plan and everything, just whoever makes the motion.
Make the motion.
I think that makes sense. If there's no other comments, oh.
Another reason, you know, we can't finish our, or we can't apply for the signage for the retail building, the monument sign out front, 126, until the application's been approved. Is that correct, Bryn?
Because they only get one.
One per lot.
Signed per lot.
Gotcha.
So they're waiting for their sign for the other lot, yeah.
So if that's the case, that's fine, but, you know, we want, we want everything to be done kind of at the same time, so. Thanks.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to make a motion on item 2.3 to approve it with staff's two requirements, with the third, that the completed sidewalk along Asheville Drive be installed in its entirety.
Prior to?
Prior to recording the plat. Normally, that wouldn't be an issue. I mean, he's doing it already, so.
All right, a motion by Adam?
I'll second that.
Second by Brody. We'll start on your side, Adam?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
And Andrew?
Yes.
That passes. Thank you, guys. And at this time, we will ask Jackson to rejoin us. And we'll move on to item 2.4, which is a request for a subdivision amendment to divide Anthem Corner Lot 1A into two lots. And this item is on for a public hearing as well. We'll turn to the city staff.
This is another two-lot commercial subdivision. This is up by the apartments just south of 118th. This is a property that the city owns, that we are, this is what the current plat looks like. The orthodontist has been built here on Lot 2. We are in the process of selling a portion of this lot, so we are just dividing that lot into two so that we can sell off the, the portion of it. This is what the proposed site plan looks like. For the lot, again, the applicant is the city, so Gordon is happy to answer. Any questions you've got about it? I'm sure he'll have something to say.
So, again, this is a Gordon Haight with Harriman City. This is a parcel that the city's owned for a long time. It's, we wanted it to go commercial. We've been trying to sell it. We have buyers that we've talked to, but a number of them were like Jiffy Lube or fast stuff. We just didn't want stuff like that with the junior high kids walking through it. We just felt it would be better to keep this more office space. So we have some more medical folks who have come in. Our look, are now looking at both parcels, two different groups. And so this subdivision will allow them to, allow the city to sell it and keep the use what we think will be more compatible with this area in that the traffic will be more on off-peak, and it's just a little bit more conducive to good teeth hygiene for our students there, so.
So, Gordon, two questions I have. Is the sidewalks all in, correct?
The sidewalk?
It looks like it is.
Yeah, the sidewalk's in the hole all the way, yes.
And then I know we're not looking at the site review, but it seems kind of interesting that we would tie it into the apartments?
So, so let's talk about that for a second. Today, you're gonna, you're gonna still look at the whole buildings and all this, and you're not approving that today. But that road you see there leads back to the five acres behind, and there's an easement that's owned by the L.E.S. Church, and so that is a public access road. So technically, we have to tie in an access to that. And so we think that that, we, we don't want too many accesses on Freedom Park or Anthem Park Road, so we're tying the one together, and the other's going to be the one that services the five-acre piece in the back. And we're also looking at another medical element.
Can you go to the aerial then?
Yeah.
I'm just, I, I know, like I said, I'm not worried about it, other than it's a shortcut for the whole apartment complex to come out on Anthem Park Boulevard. for the whole apartment complex to come out on Anthem Park Boulevard.
So if?
Go back to the overall, the one with the zoning map, it'll show it. Right there.
So there's a little?
They're going to come out and cut through there?
That, that's my only concern. I'm not worried about.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I don't know.
How the roads go straight through there? I would do it.
Do they come in, when this use comes in for a site plan? Because we're not approving the site plan today, right?
Totally agree. All I'm trying to recommend is I'm really concerned about that shortcut through. That's all, which we need to have it addressed before it comes back in. Because that is, I get that you're providing public access, but from where the fence line jogs, move your mouse up to the top corner where the boat-looking thing is parked right there.
It is boat.
That is where I'm worried about, that apartment complex coming out.
Yep.
Gordon, are we thinking there's going to be access?
So here's what I would suggest. I agree with him. This was kind of quickly done just to give a representation.
No worries, I'm just.
And I think if we cut off that access altogether, so it's just the one to the east, so you have just that one access.
To back here, yeah.
Well, no.
That's west.
Go east.
Oh, west, sorry.
Okay, over, right there. So that may be the only access into this building and close that one off. Maybe that addresses what you're looking at.
But can you go to the plat, or the proposed subdivision? So there should be a public access on Lot 1?
So I'm saying Lot 1 could have a driveway through there. That's already a dedicated public access, so we can put a driveway through that.
But what I'm saying is, do we need on this plat show a public access going from the 50-foot public access to Anthem Park Boulevard?
Along that property line.
From, move your mouse straight up that, that property line.
Right along that property line.
Do you need another access, a public access there?
No, no. I only need that to address those two buildings.
Okay.
So I think, we were thinking that that would be shared between these two. And then your cut-through could be handled by blocking, they only need one access from that public access into that area.
So if we put a requirement that no public, that no Timbergate Communities access would be granted with this approval?
Bring your, let me bring the site plan and let's see how we lay it out and let's make it so it doesn't?
I just wanted to put it on a condition of approval for the subdivision.
To avoid cut-through. I think what you want to do is make sure that whatever access we have to that road is done to minimize or discourage cut-through traffic. And I think I'd prefer to see that cut off anyway, for a number of reasons.
But it might need, it might be an emergency fire. I don't know what it is, so.
It won't adversely affect us. They're not getting their business from that apartment complex or getting it off of Anthem, so I think that's not going to be an issue. If you notice, we have the dentists, we required them to have a joint access, so all these complexes can be cross-connected.
Awesome.
So you don't have to go out in the street if you're going to the next.
Yeah, I have no problem with them going into the apartment. I just want a shortcut, let's prevent shortcutting.
But on this one too, then, with the single access coming in, you need to show some type of joint access.
Yeah, do we need some kind of joint access?
Yeah, I need ingress.
For the two, because there's only going to be the one.
That's a good point. Add that to your conditions that we make that a joint access for all three of them.
Okay.
You got all that, Adam. Good job.
Listen, I'm one of the easiest developers you've ever had to work with. I'm agreeing to everything you're saying.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, Gordon. This is on for a public hearing, so we will open it up at this time. And we will close the public hearing at this time. Enter to the planning commission for a motion or further comments.
I'd like to make a motion on item 2.4 to approve item 2.4 with staff's two recommendations with an additional two, that the ingress and egress for Lot 1 and 2 will be addressed on the plat that connects to the 50-foot public access. And that the condition of this approval is contingent that no apartment traffic will go across either of these lots.
Motion made by Adam?
Second.
A second by Andrew. And we'll call for a vote. Jackson?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
And Adam.
Yes.
We'll move on to item 2.5, that is not on for a public hearing, which is a request for a waiver of strict compliance for landscaping at a Holiday Oil Gas Station. And we'll turn to city staff.
All right, so this is for the new Holiday Oil. If you've seen it, it's ready to open, probably pretty soon. They're getting pretty close to being finished. We approved this a few months ago. They are asking for a waiver of compliance for some of the landscaping requirements and really just one specifically. This is the approved landscape plan. So again, they've got, they're doing additional landscaping, if you'll remember, along 150th, where we had the residential here. What they're asking to do is just remove the planters up in front of the building, right against the foundation of the building. You can see the site here. Again, the ordinance allows you to give a waiver for landscaping requirements if you can find that there are, that the requirement is unreasonable or unnecessary for a specific use. The applicant has given you their reasons and you've got those in your, in your packet. And the applicant is here and he can, he can explain, he can explain the reasons why he's requesting the waiver. Staff was supportive of it. We agree with their reasoning. That's up to you to determine. Again, they're not changing anything else, yeah, they're not changing anything else, it's just that landscaping just immediately right there along the building and on the side.
Thank you, Brendan. We'll ask the applicant to come up then, and he can talk about it. Please state your name.
John Linton with Holiday Oil. So happy to take any of your questions or if you just want me to make a few points.
Just maybe the reasoning behind it, if you want to just state it for the public?
Yeah, so there's, there's three reasons behind it. The first is that we've had an overabundance of landscaping on the site, so we're not, in other words, we're exceeding the existing ordinance in several areas on the site. Second, we just like this landscaping ordinance to be applied consistently with gas station and convenience stores. It's exactly what happened with the Maverick that was recently constructed. The practical reason for it is landscaping along the foundations of a convenience store tends to be a trash collector and tends to get a lot of ice and de-icer and salt and all sorts of stuff in it that doesn't allow plants to grow well. The plants that do grow well are kind of the tall, dry grasses where if a cigarette butt goes in there, it's, it's just hard to maintain and it doesn't have the effect that you want landscaping to have, which is to make it look, make the site look more appealing. And so we feel that because we're exceeding the landscaping ordinance in several areas, that because we want a consistent application of this landscaping ordinance for this use and because we've worked with staff and they, they feel the same way we do, that we'd hope that you'd grant this waiver.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the planning commission?
Are there certain areas that are more important than others? For example, could, could you keep the, the south side, but maybe not the front? You know, you can, you can stack wood and propane and other things for sale in the front, but?
Yeah, on the side, it becomes even more difficult to manage all the trash and things that go in there because we have big plate glass windows across the front of our store where people are a little more hesitant to litter there. But on the sides, that really tends to become a, you know, a litter receptacle essentially,
Thank you. I'll let the planning commission discuss.
I don't have any issue with it personally. I don't know about you guys.
I look at from the overall landscaping and I think it looks like they've done a pretty good job and I believe it's understandable why they want to deviate with taking some away from close to the building, so.
The only question is make sure we have compensating, I guess, which they probably do with all the additional landscaping, but, you know, that was a requirement of the development as well with the homes directed to the north as well, so it's a condition of that as well, if I remember right, so. Again, I don't have any issues with it either, just, you know, is, we don't want to set a precedence either, just to eliminate it as well without maybe some.
Maybe we could just say that the number of plants that they were going to put in the front, they put somewhere else? Add to it?
Yeah, maybe add to it.
I'll let the applicant come back up.
To be honest, I don't know where those plants would go. I think we've, I'm kind of creating a variable forest on one side. And, and another reason why we'd, we'd be hesitant to add more is we've worked with Salt Lake County to have a water-wise project here. We've qualified to meet this, a strict requirement for, to be water-wise there, so a lot of, we're using rock and different shrubs and things and we've already been through their whole process for this landscaping as well, so we'd be hesitant to, to change that up at this time.
I was just trying to figure out a way for us to have a justification of why we did it.
Yeah. Well, that's just it. I mean, I'm okay with what we're doing, what's being proposed here. We just need to make sure we don't?
They already well exceeded on the north side.
I, I think it looks like it's unnecessary.
Due to the fact that they already exceeded.
Due to the already, yeah.
Well, I think it stated if it's unreasonable or unnecessary. And at this point, with what is done, it becomes unnecessary. They've done more than normal landscaping in the surrounding areas and I think that's one way to look at it from my perspective.
As long as we can get that on record, I guess that's the, the main reason I want.
My one thought though is on the south side, that's kind of a big empty pad there of concrete. If there was just a little bit of green to help soften the edge on the south side between the building and that concrete pad. I, I would like to see us keep the south, or, you know, keep that south piece and then across the front, we could lose it there.
So is that, is that just concrete? I'm assuming that is just?
That is a relatively large area. Do you want to describe what is on that south side?
On that south pad?
Yeah, that's intended to become a patio area where we have some tables and places where people can go and eat their food, relax a little bit, so. That's why, that's my point about the litter that can collect there is because those people can eat on those tables and just kind of toss it and so.
There's not an entrance into the store from that side of that either?
No, there's not.
A little bit of greenery would be nice, though.
Yeah, we've tried to put as much as we can around the car wash area there and stuff it as, put as much shrubs as we can there, so it will add to that. And there's also a, the landscaping on the, I don't know what side that is, the east side, I guess I would call it, behind the store will be significant there, so it should, it should present pretty well.
This is the, if you remember, there's the detention pond right here. So it's all, it's green for, there's a couple acres there of detention.
Yeah. Who owns that detention pond? Is it ours or is it?
The developer still owns it. We're working on it.
Thank you. I will look to the planning commission to make a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve item 2.5, as recommended by staff.
I'll second it.
Motion by Brody, second by Adam, and we'll call for a vote. Adam?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
And Jackson?
No.
So that passes with a vote five to one. We'll now look at item three, which is if there's any additional chair and commission comments.
I have two.
Adam?
I'd like to make a motion to add to the next agenda, an ordinance or a rezone to address the resubdivising issue. I'd also like to make a motion to add to the next agenda, an ordinance to standardize development agreements, review and approval process. And again, that's for the next agenda. You don't have to have it done, but I'd like to have those two.
Can you just, can you read them again?
What was the second one? The second one was, to add to the agenda, an ordinance to standardize the development agreement review and approval process. Those are the two that I think we need to address quickly. Yeah, and I, I put it that it can be either an ordinance or a rezone, whichever staff feels is the way, if it's a spot zone or if it's a ordinance that kind of just puts some verbiage that protects the city from further resubdividing. So whatever you feel is appropriate, I'd just like it on the next planning commission. Will you make sure that's?
Thank you, Adam. Are there any other comments?
There was a note in the last item about whether we wanted to look at removing the landscape requirement for convenience stores, like the landscaping around the building. Is that something we want to do or?
No.
I think, they bring up a good point.
We're actually, now that we have a landscape architect, we're going to, I'm going to, we're working on the whole landscape ordinance, is likely to come back with some.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Thank you, Andrea.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I don't know.
Hey, do we need a second on Adam's motion to add items to the agenda?
I did what John said. Is that what I'm supposed to say? Make a motion to add it to the next agenda?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Oh, second by Brody. Oh, there we go.
Second both, you gotta second both then.
So motion by Adam and a, a second by Brody. And call for a vote on this? All right, we'll call for a vote. Jackson?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
And Adam?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
We did two though. Did we need, I made two separate motions.